Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Enfield Town Council. It is Tuesday, January 17, 2012. I'd ask everyone in the audience to please stand for the prayer led by Councilman Tom Arnoney, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, we pray for our community. We pray for our family and friends. We ask your protection for all the men and women in military service. Give your strength and healing to all those who are sad, lonely, and sick, and bless all those who help them. Watch over those in authority so people everywhere may enjoy freedom, security, and peace. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Tom. And may we have roll call, please.
Councilman Arnoney?
Here.
Councilman Bosco?
Here.
Councilman Crowley?
Councilman Edgar?
Here.
Councilman Hall?
Here.
Mayor Copen?
Here.
Councilman Kinsler?
Here.
Councilman Lee?
Councilman Mangini?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Councilman Stokes?
Here.
We have nine members present; two are absent.
Next item on the agenda is the fire evacuation announcement. In the event of the fire alarm sounding here at Town Hall, I remind everyone in the audience that we must evacuate the building. The closest exit would be to the rear of council chambers and out to the front of Town Hall. But if you choose to go out the side door, to your right or left, we ask that you take the back stairs to the backside of Town Hall and out to the parking lot. Minutes of the preceding meetings, the first would be the special meeting of January 3, 2012. So moved. Moved by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Any discussion on the minutes? Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Motion. Minutes are adopted, and then the minutes of the regular meeting of January 3.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Kinsler. Discussion. Sensing none, show of hands, all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? And the regular meeting minutes are adopted. Next item on the agenda is our special guest section. And first, I'd like to call up Sue Stankiewicz and all the members of the Enfield -- I want to get this right -- Enfield Nurses School Nurses Association for a check presentation. So come on up. And if the council wishes to stand --
I wish.
-- we've got a lot of --
You got it?
Yep. The Enfield School Nurses Association.
E.S.N.A.
And come down here, and equal balance. Doesn't matter, you're all on television. Even if you flank to the right or the left, you're on television. See, you can see it right there. Okay, Sue, I'm going to, first of all, thank you for being here this evening, all of you. And you've got some exciting news, so I'm going to turn over the microphone and let us know what this is all about. So, thank you. Here's the mic.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. First of all, I'd like to say that we are here, finally, to get rid of this money. For the past seven years, since 2006, the school nurses have been fundraising and doing everything we can to try to, you know, get the money to put AEDs in the schools, in all the schools. So, we appreciate the fact that the mayor finally got the town council to get that money. And so, I don't even know what I'm saying here. Actually, we have a check in the amount of $5,976 that we've been holding on to, which was donated from various, you know, people and businesses throughout the town. So, we'd like them all to know that finally it's coming to fruition, and we're going to have AEDs in all of the schools, public schools, as well as in the Town Hall or Town Building. So we thank you very much.
Okay. And here's the check. And how about if you tell us what an AED is?
Oh, wait a minute.
You can pass it off.
It's a lifesaver, not of any flavor either. It's an automated external defibrillator that can jump-start the heart if someone goes into cardiac arrest. And it can be used anywhere by, you know, any, anyone, at any time, and, you know, anybody can have a cardiac arrest, and so they're essential to have everywhere.
Every school.
In every school, in every town building, as well.
Great.
Well, it is a, they're all public buildings, and it was an identified need, and this was an initiative that was brought forward to us by the school nurses. And so we did our small part as the town, but this was definitely a joint effort by all involved. And it was truly an identified need, and we thank you for spearheading the effort and keeping in constant contact and reminding us that this was a priority and that we needed to get it funded. So, I want to thank the entire council because it was everyone working together to make sure that this happened in the current budget. So we're going to turn this check over to the town attorney or the town manager? To the town manager. We'll turn this over, and it completes the project. And when will the AEDs be in the buildings? Do we know that, Matt?
I think the AEDs are in.
Yes.
They just have to be installed.
Correct. Next week.
This week?
Yes, well, next week.
Next week.
So they're here in the town of Enfield and installed in all buildings next week. So, thank you all again. We appreciate your support. All right. Smile. Wave to people at home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay, again, thanks to the Enfield School Nurses Association for that great donation and for spearheading the efforts to get AEDs in all of our public buildings. Next item on our agenda, again, under the special guest section, is a presentation by Dave Wauer, who is one of our registrar voters. So Dave, come on up to the center table.
Thank you.
And again, Dave, thanks for being here as well.
Thank you all. It's very interesting. I only get to see my neighbor usually outside of our houses when we have snowstorms. It was great to see Sue making a presentation to the town on behalf of all the nurses in the school. So, that was a great thing. And I'm not wishing for any more snow this week. And we have a very short PowerPoint presentation, and I'm going to town managers, our production manager on this deal. Let me just start out going to the first page after the cover page. And just, we're trying to educate the residents and voters of Enfield as well by this presentation because they may or may not, they may have read about the word redistricting, but they may not know what it means. So hopefully, in the next couple of minutes, the public will get a greater understanding of the process. As the Congress has to redistrict, so does the General Assembly, its Senate seats and its representative seats. And these, and this process happens every 10 years following a census. So the Connecticut General Assembly formed a redistricting commission, and finally, after much deliberation, came up with new boundary lines for general assembly districts and state senate districts in December of 2011. And the PowerPoint said the Connecticut Legislature voted to approve the changes. By appointing the redistricting commission, they in effect are approving what the redistricting commission does. And then the, that commission, which is comprised of members of the General Assembly, sent the information to the Secretary of State's office for publishing. And when it was published, it became law. And on the next slide, in December, the registrars of voters in 169 cities and towns received a direction from the Secretary of the State's office that it, we must implement any changes to state senate and general assembly boundary lines prior to local town committees having their caucuses between January 10 and 17 of 2012. So at the end of the last week of December, we were very busy creating the new general assembly statistical information. And then, going to the next page. What we found out is that each general assembly district must have a population of approximately 23,000 people. And we have some statistics on that. I've given you statistics for the New House 58 district and the New House 59 district. And that, very interesting, the 23,879 people in House District 58 all reside in Enfield. The 24, of the 24,314 people in District 59, 3,500 of them reside in East Windsor. And the first map, I want to, this is the old. I just wanted to give you the old, depict a picture to show you what we had. And the blue is, was the former House 58, and the green was the former House 59. And then now the new news. The first new map, the dark purple depicts the boundary lines of the new generals, or New House 58, or General Assembly 58, as it's formerly known. And you can see below the certification by the Connecticut General Assembly Reapportion It's basically, it's easy to explain. The General Assembly 58 moved a couple of miles east on its northern half. And kind of began, encompassed quite a bit of streets that were formerly in House 59. Then the next map, the one of House 59 itself, shows you both of them, but it also depicts where General Assembly 59 extends into East Windsor. And when an individual runs for the General Assembly 59 seat this November, that person would be campaigning in two communities. The two respective registrars of voters will compile the election's information, and then it'll, individually. And then it's, the total of the two gets you the total vote for the candidates in the New House 59. So previously, for past 10 years, people were campaigning just in Enfield. But now, one, a couple individuals have to campaign in East Windsor. That, I mean, that is the bottom-line change for candidates running for office this year. The next, the next slide, just want to point out what the Connecticut law required us to do, and that was create the lists, which the General Assembly have dictated shall be. So what we did back at the end of December was create what's called a state-federal list of voters. And that now conforms to the law. So we have the proper list of names for the political parties and for the candidates. What we are, and as required by law, each district shall have one voting site. So what we did was, we surveyed the school administration to find out about, and we mentioned dates, and we asked them about various activities in their buildings. And what, after looking at the feedback from the superintendent and from the school principals relative to activities, the registrars, in conjunction with the town clerk, determined that we would designate Enfield High as the voting site for General Assembly 58 and John F. Kennedy Middle School as the voting site for 59. And I'm going to, my last bullet point there is, this is only for 2012. We're in a transition. We're in a transition because the town of Enfield has its own local town council districts, and they have not been addressed. That is another process that occurs separately from what I've just described. And that, so in order to be able to transition to what was the past, we have to do something this year. What, in any event, boundary lines have changed for voters. And I'll go to the last slide. Our priority at, from this point moving forward, is to conduct three elections and to educate the voters who are registered and people to be registered, where the voting sites are, what district they live in. And as we did a couple of years ago, you can now go to the town council website, type in your street, then type in your number, and it'll tell you which general assembly district you live in and where you vote. So that has already been accomplished by town staff, the IT staff, they're great people. And the maps that you've seen were posted on the website today, so people can go there and see the maps. There's a, so, we have begun the process somewhat. But what, we came here tonight, and again, my colleague Carol Senske's out of town on a business trip for one of her organizations, and apologized for not being here. She'll be back in town Thursday, and we'll plan to meet again Thursday night. But it's critical that the voters understand where they're supposed to vote for the three elections for this calendar year. The first election is a Republican presidential primary on Tuesday, April 24. The second election is a political party primary for congressional and US senate seats on Tuesday, August 14. And then the third one is the Tuesday, November 6, with the general election. And we've taken a look at the number of people that might be eligible to vote each time, just so you know, it's a, I know you guys like statistics. There are approximately, for the April 24 Republican presidential primary, there are approximately 4,775 registered Republicans. And they would have to be notified where they vote. When you get to the, I'll call them the political, the multiple political party primaries of August 14, you have 89, 8,961 registered Democrats, and they would have to be informed where they vote. And then finally, in the November election, you have 11,051 unaffiliated voters who'd have to be educated. So that's, those statistics, those are the people who are, the audiences we need to address in the coming weeks and months, as we move forward this year. And again, I stress, this is a transition. Hopefully, we can, if you want to ask the question about municipal redistricting, we can do that, you know, next council meeting. Questions?
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Questions for Dave? Anyone? Well, I have a question for you. When I was looking over your material, and it's more, it's a concern and a question, my concern is that with the presidential election in November?
Yes.
Being at just two polling places. And I know, we always hear it when we're standing out at the polls for our respective elections, that why has my polling place been changed? And sometimes it's perception, sometimes it's reality. Every 10 years, there's a portion that changes. But I, my belief is if we're going to change a polling place, we should change it once, in one felled swoop. So in the November election, we should be at, if we're going to maintain four polling places in town for the next 10 years?
Right.
Then we should get to the point where we can, that we're at four polling places for the largest election that people participate in, being the presidential election. And if it requires the council doing something to get our council districts redistricted in time, and I don't know if I'm necessarily concerned about the Republican primary and maybe an August primary, because you're focused in on a set-specific people and said, hey, any Republican that's going to vote in the Republican primary this winter, go to, go to one of two places. But come November, I would be very cautious about only having two polling places, remembering back about four years ago when we made the switch the first time, and there was confusion, and there was a lot of people coming out to vote, and there's a parking issue, and people getting in and out. Not necessarily once they're inside, because you can staff up for that, but being to, being able to get, to park conveniently and get into the polling place. And if we do two this year, and then we revert to four, you're just making another change. And people, when they're, they're creatures of habit when it comes to voting, they go where they're used to going. And so I think we need, if we need to do something, we should do it so that we're at four polling places for November.
Do I have a couple of minutes to respond?
Yeah.
I've met with the town manager just to go over the process for municipal government redistricting. And it'd been our hope, that the law states that the local boundaries must be revised or reviewed every 10 years, as per the municipal charter, the town charter, and be effective no later than 90 days before the November 2013 municipal election. That's not to say it could not be done any time before then. So that was the original discussion, trying to follow the charter and what has historically taken place the last 20 or 30 years. Can we speed up the process? Certainly. I had had some recommendations to the town manager relative to a committee to undertake municipal redistricting. If the council wanted us to bring that back forth at the next meeting, or to transmit information, we could do so in the interim, and speed up the process. But I did not want to take away, that's your process. That's not ours. That, we just, you know.
On your slides, it's the one on your page two, but it's your fourth, it's your fourth slide, where you give the population per district with 23,879 in 58. So that's all in Enfield?
Correct.
And then the 24,314 in 59, is that, are those Enfield residents or Enfield East Windsor?
That's, it's, the 24,314 is Enfield and East Windsor, and I did a approximate count on the East Windsor voting blocks, there are approximately 3,500 people that live in East Windsor. So the Enfield portion's approximately 21,000.
21 versus 24.
Correct. 24 versus, 21 versus 23. I do not believe that there is a requirement that all of our council districts be equally populated. I do not believe that's the case because--
Yeah, when we've done, I remember doing it 10 years ago, and we tried our hardest, and it was Deputy Mayor Lou Fiori and I that worked on it 10 years ago to come up with as balanced as possible without, you know, taking out just a section of a neighborhood. So 10 years ago, we did our best to really come up with four, as best as we could, balanced districts, population changes and shifts. But we were, we also had just two districts, so you could take 58 and split it in half, and you could take 59 and split it in half, and you would have four almost equal council districts. By adding in East Windsor, it adds in a bit of a dynamic where traditionally districts one and three have been the larger ones. And now 58 has, say, 24,000 population.
Correct. That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean there's an equal number of voters there, because this is not a voter list, this is a population dispersion.
We may, and we, actually, we may have used voters in the past as the, we may have used voters as the, registered voters as the split. Because does this count, include prison population?
I believe, I'm not sure.
Because then, that would be throwing a lot of--
It's population.
--population into 59th district that's not voting eligible.
Yeah, and it is on the census.
Yeah, I have, I have blocks here, so I could not tell you what the block means. We used our GIS manager here in town to come up with this.
So, I guess to, since I've been the only one talking, what's the sense of the council on voting polling places for the November election?
Mr. Mayor, could I just, one thing real quick? I'm sorry--
Oh, sorry, no, go ahead.
--to Councilman Arnoney. But, you know, going back to the charter, you know, the way that the, if you decide to alter the boundary, it does have to be approved by referendum. So, to be able to do, you know, to come up with, you know, what those new boundaries are, that will have to go to the voter. So you'd either have to do it at one of the primaries prior to it, or do it-- So you'd either have to do it at one of the primaries prior to it, or do it the day of the election in November.
For the following November.
Correct. So I don't know if there really is a way to get that done prior to November 6th, if you have, unless, unless you do it such a way that it, right, goes to a special election prior to that.
I'm good, I'll try and help you out a little bit. When you, we talk about four sites, we still have one site for each council district, that has not changed. For the council election year, that nothing's changed. You've established that, that's in place. What we have is a list of voters in the new House 58. We have technically two sites in House 58, but legally, we cannot subdivide House 58, that is what it is. We could conceivably open up two sites, and I have to check the Secretary of State's office, because redistricting is tied to each site. That's how the redistricting was done. It's kind of like you can do either/or voting, but the logistics, and I've discussed that with my fellow registrar, of going to either of two places with the same list could create a nightmare in terms of people voting twice and all that. So that's, that's our logistical issue. We have one list. And it's not, we're not able to cut it in half in House 58 or 59. It's the list of all the streets in each district. By modifying the council districts to configure more closely to the new General Assembly districts, and having a referendum in August, conceivably?
At the earliest.
Conceivably, we could get, because this council has to create an ordinance based on a recommendation, and then the ordinance goes to the public. And that, I defer to the county, to the town attorney as to when you have to submit the information to the Secretary of State's office for a vote on a local referendum. I mean, local referendums can be held at any time. You just have to notice and do whatever is required. So conceivably, we can speed up the process. We just have to reconfigure. Our timeframe was supposed to be your timeframe, which was a year from November.
Tom?
Back on the two polling places for the congressional, those are the largest voting blocks that come out. Unfortunately, I wish they did for council in local elections like they do for national and state elections. So that's the problem I see. Two polling places for an election that's, I don't know, I guess, almost twice as large as a municipal election in some cases, and that's a guess.
To, at least twice.
So, yeah, that worries me, you know, with those two schools as it is now. And I got to agree with Scott, four places sounds, if that's what you're saying, sounds a lot more, a lot more sensible in this situation, especially in those larger elections. Thank you.
Anyone else? Tom?
Yeah, just to clarify, the four, the reason that it would be difficult for the four is, please explain that again, because I'm a fan of four.
In redistricting for the General Assembly, we establish one site per law, per, per, per General Assembly district, which we did. We have two eligible sites in each district, so we surveyed all, the principals of all four schools to try and find the best optimal sites for each General Assembly district. And based upon their feedback of activities, events, primarily in April, we kind of, you know, reviewed that and identified the Enfield High School and the JFK Middle School as the two most optimal. So that's, that's how we got to where we got. We did not do it in a vacuum, we kind of looked out there to see what we're faced with. The, the four sites that existed last November's election still exist for the four council districts. They have not gone away. What we don't have is an alignment of council districts with generals, the new General Assembly. That there's not, they're not physically aligned with one another. And there's, and per this redistricting, until we get to municipal, we've established what we need to do by law for the General Assembly.
So is it that there's three old polling places in one new district and one in another, if you let, if things were left the way they were?
It'd be hard, it'd be hard to describe.
In other words, if you took Barnard, which is a polling place, and you took Enfield High, which is a polling place
Mm-hmm.
... that are in the same new congressional district?
Correct. They're in the same General Assembly district.
Last time and this coming time?
Correct.
So I guess my question is, why wouldn't we want to just, why couldn't we leave that the way it is?
Is that, is it law? I mean, are you saying it's a law?
No, the, we have, we have a list that we can generate to hold a municipal election. It's called a local list.
Well, I think, I think where both Tom and Tom and myself are going is that, can you use this November's election as, so you redraw the four council districts, and they conform to the 58th and the 59th?
Yeah.
And you tell the voters, your new polling place pending approval, you know, for the council districts are Fermi, JFK, Barnard, and Enfield High.
Uh-huh.
And, and so you're, you're telling the people within the, in the proposed council districts that these are your, one of your four polling places.
Uh-huh.
Pending approval, but, and then it gets approved in November, because that's, I believe that's what we did 10 years ago. No one really knows the questions there on the ballot. People read it and go, yeah, that makes sense, and it, and it gets passed. But you're just doing the work ahead of time, and then if, for whatever reason, it gets voted down at the November, then you've got a year to rework your districts for your November 2013 election. But you do the work ahead of time, and you say, here's your new polling place, asterisk, pending approval of your council districts at your November 2012 election. And that way, you, nine times out of 10, you've made one change at one time, and then you're good for 10 years.
We could certainly accelerate the process to reconfigure the municipal.
Do you understand where I'm going?
Yeah.
So it's like, you hold it now, it doesn't take effect for a year, but you hold it November 12th, so it gets approved, and then it's in place for November 13. But you do the work now versus waiting.
Yeah. Well, look, I have a question and a comment. The comment first, just to reiterate what I think is the issue that David identified about why they feel that they can only do one polling place rather than two, is that you don't have a way, because everybody is aligned, the way that you submitted, the eligible voters are aligned with one polling place, not two. And because of that, you know, somebody, in theory, could go to polling place A and then drive over to polling, polling place B and vote again.
Correct.
So that, I think, is a logistical issue that has to be addressed, be able to...
But why?
Because...
If you, in the database, if we create our four council districts, and you've got 59-1 and 59-3, and you've got 58-2 and 58-4, as they are allowed now, you rerun your report, and you've got, you've got it already broken down by General Assembly district, council district, and that becomes your list, and those are the voters that you're sending a notification to saying, you are now 58-4. And you're, you're now, you're at Henry Barnard. You may have been at Henry Barnard. You may be new at Henry Barnard. But here's your, your new polling place for your presidential election. And you, so it's like, you got to find a way to be able to take a list and say, add another column to it and resort it, and say, notify four subsets of the town.
And I think that, is that what you said, you had to talk to the Secretary of State to see if you could do it? Because that's, because what you've submitted to them is not that right now.
That is correct.
It's just the two, two polling places.
We, we could not, until the council initiates local redistricting and asks us to work on it, we're at your mercy. You know, if you're asking us to initiate now, and we had thought that we'd probably bring something back early, later, you know, this spring and then move forward.
You have to do it now.
To, to, so to get to where you would, I think, ideally like to be, we have to accelerate the municipal redistricting process, which is what some towns are doing right now.
Yeah, and I, and I'm looking at, I'm looking at the people up here, and the direction is we have to accelerate that process. We have to do it once at one time.
Now, let me ask the question, to try to hone in what that timeframe is, we need to get this done. Are we in a situation where wherever the polling place is for the primary is the same polling place that the voter has to vote for in November?
I've been told, and we can ask for a clarification, pending realignment of municipal districts, which do not exist today, that whatever site is opened for the presidential primary must be opened, see, it's a technical question, must be opened for the November 6th election.
So it's not, it's not limiting, so if you have more.
I do not believe so. That is correct.
Okay.
But there was, and I think we can, as you asked me the question, I'm trying to explain to the public that the current council breakdown is not aligned with how the new House 58 and 59. We have to get it there. And that's why I'm only presenting this to you today, because I don't have what you'd like to get to. But we'll, we'll work on it if you give us the permission to move forward.
Okay. Who else? Tom?
So in, in, I don't know if this is for David or for Matt, but is there something we can do tonight to move that ball rolling, to have four polling places for 2012 and 2013? Just to keep it as simple as possible.
I think you've, you've done what's necessary to get the ball rolling, and we'll get everything prepared we need to get. Because I think, I just, it's been a while since I looked at it. I think council actually appointed the committee by resolution the last time, do you remember? So there'll, there'll need to be a resolution that appoints who's going to be on that.
Yeah, and, and it was two people, two council members, that worked, I think primarily with Suzanne 10 years ago. We didn't really have the technology that we have. I remember driving streets with Lou Fiore, and we were with voter lists, saying, okay, we got to somehow balance this, where are we now? And, and trying to find where breaks actually made sense. Like, we knew we had to add, hypothetically, we had to add 2,000 people to District 4. Well, where did, you know, drove a street and said, well, this one has 20 voters on it, and this has 50 voters on it, and, and so it was just moving them. Hopefully, with technology, we can layer and kind of just look at a screen and move and see where, where the totals come.
And I think informally, even before, if you wanted to get moving informally, if, you know, you could agree who your representatives were, would be for that, you know, we can start setting up meetings with our GIS person, and, and of course, you know, any of our other staff, we need to be there, and, and get moving on this right away.
Okay. So you want them for the first meeting in February?
Yeah, that's it. We'll, we'll have the resolution ready for that, but like I said, if, if you, you know, you can identify who those people are, we can get those meetings set up even in advance of the resolution, start working on that.
Okay. All right. Anything else on this one? Dave, thanks for the work that you're doing, and I know we've just piled another layer on top, but just think of all the free time you'll have next year. All right. Thank you very much, Dave. Next item on the agenda is public communications and petitions. If there's anyone in the audience wishing to address the council, I ask you to please raise your hand. I will call on you, come forward to the front table. Please state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments to no more than five minutes, and we ask that you refrain from the use of personalities. Jeff, you are first.
So Scott, you're responsible for keeping me in the picture?
No, it wasn't me.
Good evening. Jeff Mijak, 3 Sharp Street here in Enfield. A couple of quick notes here tonight. Department of Public Works has got a great website where the residents can go in and enter a trouble ticket, got a tree down, limbs down, whatnot, and the guys are fantastic. They get to you two, three days tops, they get the problem resolved. What the system needs, though, is a closeout, notification that the job isn't finished, so the residents know that it's done. I think that'd be a big help to the system. The other thing that I want to talk about tonight is, January 29th is a Clean Energy Expo at Enfield High School. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. We encourage everybody to come out. Admission is free. We will be accepting donations of nonperishable food items for the Enfield Food Shelf. We've got about 30 vendors lined up right now. We'll have everything from LED lighting, CFL lighting, geothermal, solar, and all this goes on. We've also got about five seminars that are going to cover everything from how to landscape your yard for energy efficiency to how to get a green job in this green economy. So do come on down. And don't worry about breakfast. Scouts are going to be there with coffee and baked goods. Girl Scouts will be selling cookies, so there'll be plenty to eat. And if you have any questions, drop us a line at cleanenergy@enfield.org. Thank you.
Jeff, please repeat the date and location and the time.
The time is 10:03, Enfield High School, January 29th.
Great.
The weather's supposed to be good that day, too. And there's no football.
Knock on wood, yeah. Thank you very much. Public communications, anyone else? Thank you very much. Next item would be councilman communications and petitions, Councilman Mangini.
Thank you, Mayor Coben. Just one comment. You and I spoke about the Fourth of July trophy, the Democrat-Republican trophy. I did speak with Tom Berry, or I'm sorry, softball trophy, and he has had it inscribed, and he has expressed a desire to work with town staff to have it placed in the showcase out here, if that's a possibility. I don't know what we need to do to move that forward, but the fact that, you know, he has gone to the trouble of having it inscribed and taking care of it, and he's asking if we can show it off.
Find a home.
For the community. So I just wanted to bring that forward. Do we need to do anything about that, or?
We'll get it to the town manager's office, and they'll get it in the showcase.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Has a home. And that is the, that is the traditional Democrat-Republican softball game at the Fourth of July Town Celebration on the Friday evening. And so it gets inscribed with the winner. I don't know about the score. I don't know if there's enough numbers for it to include. But it makes sense, and Cindy, thanks for bringing that up, because it makes sense to have it be presented here in town.
It's for the people of Enfield to look at.
Yeah.
Enjoy.
Great, thanks. Councilman Kinsler?
Yes, through Scott, to Matt, want to just send a thank you. I drove by Brainerd, and they, they took care of the graffiti, and they took care of most of the debris over at Brainerd Park. A little bit left, but you could tell they'd gone through there and made a good effort. For the public, you know, Enfield has a new dog park over on Ecology Drive. Has, has the sign been, sign department put a new sign out yet? I know we brought that up last time.
It's a street sign.
If it hasn't, the, the transfer station entrance on the left, if you're coming from Kennedy on Town Farm Road, is Ecology Drive. Hopefully, it'll have a sign up. We have been told that there's a special benefit for karaoke night at the Moose Lodge on the 21st at 8:00 p.m. this week from Saturday, and, excuse me, this Saturday. And it's benefiting them, you know, they're, they're a nonprofit, the town has partnered with them, but they receive all their funds from public donations, and they need to buy some benches and some water stations for the dogs, or very soon, ice stations for the dogs. And so if anybody that can come out, please join, it's, it's a, it's a good cause. And a reminder, in case you didn't hear, the Clean Energy Expo, Jeff just came up, took the wind out of my sails, they do have some things going on there on the 29th that the public really needs to know about. You can go in there, and then for $10, you can buy two lamps, I believe it's 12 CFL light bulbs of various sizes, and a LED light sensor for $10. That's just one of the examples of the miraculous things they're doing. They have a flyer, if you go to the webpage, you can pull that up, it's very hard to see here. It's very hard to see here, but gives you all of the different things that you can participate in to help you immediately start saving money. And February 23rd starts the first meeting of the New Energy Task Force that Dan and Jeff and several members that are on that task force will start kicking off the ball for the town end of it, to see if we can do the same things for the town. That's all I have.
Great. Thanks, Tom. Councilman Arnoni.
Yeah, I'd like to just bring up one thing. We celebrated Martin Luther King's birthday yesterday, Memorial Day, and in the J.I., they had an interesting article on Simsbury High School students that discovered through investigation and talking with people that lived in the area, that Martin Luther King worked in Suffield on the tobacco farms in 1944 and '47, and he earned money for college there. And they also found letters from Martin Luther King to back this up, and they're trying to build a memorial now. And I know they have Cigna involved now, and they're trying to build a memorial in Suffield on this. His summers, it says, were greatly influenced, his decision to become a minister, and the freedom he felt here in this state fueled his fight against segregation, which I thought was a wonderful thing for the Suffield students, and did a great job researching that. I'd like to also mention, we have a young man that works here in the town of Enfield part-time, Justin Limo. He had a heart transplant unexpectedly and quickly some months ago, and we're having a fundraiser. They're having a fundraiser for him on February 4th from 4:00 to 10:00. And that's a Saturday, the Knights of Columbus on 371 Washington Road. Tickets are $15. They also need raffle tickets also, or raffle prizes, so you can call his mother at 860-798-1252. He's doing really good now. He was very lucky to get a heart as fast as he did. He went into the hospital, working that day, they brought him into the hospital, and he had a heart within a couple of days, I believe it was. He was so, so lucky. He's a very fortunate young man. They rushed him out to Yale, New Haven. And he's been over 20 years working part-time for the town, and he's a fixture down for... He started the rec department, then moved into youth services where he works there as staff, part-time. So, the costs, you can just imagine, are enormous on this, and the family really needs help, and I hope anybody, any small thing that they can do. If you need to contact somebody, you can contact me, and I'll get you in contact with the family. And then, last but not least, police tip line. It's been moved to the front of the police website, and this is an anonymous tip line. If you see any activity in your neighborhood, you see, obviously, anything non-emergency, drug dealing, drinking parties, underage, go to the website and click on the email. You can make a complaint, send it to the police, they'll investigate it. This saves, too, a lot of people in their neighborhoods from having police officers' cars pull up in their driveway right after a complaint, which could cause some friction if you have any, you know, bad stuff going on in your neighborhood. So, this avoids that, and it's right there, and there's also a number, too. So, it's an anonymous tip line. Go right on the front page of the... They just moved it there on the police website, and use that. And if you see anything unusual in your neighborhood that's non-emergency, use it. It's a great way to stop some riffraff in town. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Councilman Hall.
Through Scott to the town manager. Matt, do we have any idea on the delivery dates for those smaller tipper barrels that people are waiting to exchange the larger ones for yet? I know I had talked to you about somebody getting a July date when they called Public Works, but we did find out that was moved up. But do we have a specific date on that? I know there's a lot of people that are waiting for those. And I think that was it. I thought I had one more thing, but I can't. Went right out of my head.
We'll come back to it if you remember.
Oh, I wonder what it was.
Oh, there you go. See?
Senior moment here. Do we have a closeout follow-up on those tickets that come through the emails to Public Works? Matt, you can address it under your communications. I'm not aware of any, but maybe we do. Thanks.
Thank you, Carol. Councilman Bosco.
Yeah, through the mayor to the town manager. Pothole alert. Post Road at Post Office is really bad now. We need to get that taken care of. You lost?
You lost a kid in the hole?
All set? Yes. All set, Joey? Deputy Mayor Nelson?
I think Councilman Bosco means he dropped his Twinkie. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move items A1, A2, D, and E to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini, to move those items to miscellaneous. Any discussion? Sensing number, show hands all those in favor. Those opposed? Any abstentions? Items have been moved?
And through the mayor to the town manager. Matt, the transfer station, are we charging for brush again? A resident probably three, four weeks ago went in the transfer station with some brush left over from the storm, and he actually had to pay to get rid of it. And I wasn't sure if we put fees back in place. I thought we removed all the fees for yard waste and stuff.
Was it just for the permit? Because I think you still have to have an Enfield permit, but they shouldn't be charging for the yard waste.
Right. That's what I thought. Okay, I'll ask them. I didn't want to say too much, because I was unaware, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? I just, I have a couple. Just a reminder to the council that we have our next council goal-setting session on Monday, January 23rd, at 5:30, Matt. Downstairs in the Enfield room. Just for the folks at home, we spent two Saturdays ago, we spent the day traveling to many of our municipal facilities, and hopefully, we start bringing some definition to our goals on the 23rd, so it's important that everyone attend. I have a meeting on Tuesday, January 31st with Senator Kissel, and it's the mayors and first selectmen from the 7th Senatorial District. So, if there's anything that you want brought up this legislative session that you would like me to forward to Senator Kissel, please get that to me, and I'll compile an email, share with the full council. And then, other than that, that's... It's quiet, so it's... Want to just congratulate all you Patriot and Giants fans for a successful weekend, and looking forward to the coming weekend. And although I'm not a Patriot or a Giant fan, I'm hoping for a Super Bowl between the two. Wouldn't that be nice? That's right. Anyone else? Okay. We'll move to town manager report in communications.
Good evening. Very briefly.
Good evening.
Very briefly. The Q Alert process, which I think is what we're talking about, should require a closeout. I mean, once an action is taken care of, it's a contingent or up to the staff to then go in and say that this was completed by this date. So, there is that, it should be happening in the process, and we'll go back and take a look at that. And generally, they're pretty good about doing that, but again, we always need to review to see what's going on, so we'll take a look at that. But there is, there is a process in place that that final contact of, you know, this was completed on this day is supposed to happen. Smaller tippers, no, I do not have an exact date. The latest I heard was mid-part of February. So, as soon as I have a complete date, I'll let you know. I mean, generally, from order to, you know, receiving, it's been about two weeks. So, I don't know if it's just, you know, a safety or what. Go ahead.
Matt, with the... And I don't know the answer to this. Would the multifamilies, or did we do one recycled tipper barrel per building, or was it per household?
Per unit.
Per unit.
So, yeah, so the ones that we are providing that to, say it was four units, we would provide four.
Four. Okay, so the situation would be the same if there was an in-law apartment as well on a household, because there's two separate households there, too?
Well, that depends if it's recognized as a two-unit or not. So, I mean, if it's an in-law apartment, it may not be, it may not be recognized as a two-family. So, they would only received one tipper. And we have those cases where, you know, they're in-laws, which are really not in-law apartments.
Right, right.
So, because it is a different zoning classification if they're, in fact, are using that as a rental unit.
Right, right. Okay. Thank you.
The last thing I just wanted to bring council up to date on, I recently met with the first selectman from the towns of Summers, Stafford, and Union to go over the status of the probate court, and as councils aware, we didn't receive funding for upgrades to the Hazerville Institute, which is where we kind of all agreed would be the center for that. In light of that, there was some brief discussions about relocation, but everybody there, including the judge of probate, agreed that keeping it as it is right now with the location in Enfield as the primary court here in the town hall, and a ancillary office for the judge, and some walk-in in Stafford to keep the status quo. So, I think that's a major, a major move on this. Of course, in the end, probate, state probate, may have the final say in what happens, but from our perspective, and I know council's perspective, you know, the way that it is set up right now provides the highest level of customer service to our residents that do a lot of walking in here to town hall, may not have transportation to drive to Summers or someplace else. So, just want to let you know that it's kind of status quo for now, until something else changes, and I'll let you know when it does.
Good. Anyone have any questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt. Town attorneys, report in communications. Kevin?
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, I did follow up. We had the correspondent from Homeland Towers LLC about that site last year. It appears that the site that they've identified is an open space portion of a subdivision, and I'll follow up and confirm that, but if that's the case, under the zoning regs, that property is reserved for passive recreation essentially, or open space. So, it wouldn't even be a viable option, but I'll confirm on that. And that, and following up on those items that we talked about at the earlier special meeting with regard to the contingency funding for the Board of Ed, I'll get some answers out to everybody this week or next week prior to the next meeting. Otherwise, it's been fairly quiet. Leave yourself.
Good. Any questions for Kevin? Tom?
I'm sorry, Kevin, and by that, did you mean that that site would not be, in your estimation, a suitable site, or that it would not be a problem having that be a site?
If it's under the zoning regs, the zoning regs would have to be changed, because it's accepted as an open space for recreation and open space, and we'd be putting in structures onto that. I think that would, and I'll likely, would violate that zoning reg.
All set? Anyone else? Thank you, Kevin. Next reports of special committees of the council, Councilman Mangini.
We had our veterans monument meeting, Councilman Hall, me, and who else from the council was there? Oh, Greg.
That would be, I was out of town.
But you were in Florida.
Right.
On your vacation. And Dan, of course, was there. Pretty much, you know, we went over the, you know, the accomplishments that the committee has had. Our next meeting is going to be the end of February, but we did talk about the plaque, and it was suggested that we put, under financial support from the citizens of Enfield, in addition to the Enfield Fourth of July Committee. That was something the committee had agreed upon. Other than that, you know, everything was status quo, as far as... The contract was awarded, and we talked about going forward with that. Thank you. And then, we also had a human services committee meeting, Councilman Hall also, and I were at that. We will be having a follow-up meeting. We heard from some of the agencies, but some of the information has to be disseminated, and of course, that panel is directed by our social services director, Pam Brown. So, she will be getting back to us. I believe it's going to be the week after next, the next meeting. So, we'll have more information on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else for special reports of committees of the council? I have two that I just want to... Here I am. I forgot to turn my microphone back on. I have two reports. One is the Strategic Planning Committee, the joint committee between the council and the board on the reorganization of the school system. We're meeting again this Thursday, 6:30, down in the Enfield room. And so, we're, as everyone knows, the board made a decision on Enfield High School as being the high school, the one high school of merged. And so, we're going to start laying out the timeline and game plan, and today, through the email that was sent to Matt, you saw that we're also requesting a joint meeting of the council and the board to bring everyone up to speed as to where we are at this point in time, and where we need to go forward, if it's, in the end, is the decision to go to referendum for the one high school. So, Strategic Planning Committee meeting Thursday, and we'll get that joint meeting of the council and the board set up as quickly as we can, hopefully, before the end of February. I'm sorry, before the end of January. So, before our next council meeting. And then, my second one...
Again, I had a brief conversation to me, a brief conversation with Dr. Gallagher and Mr. Neville earlier tonight, and it looks like it's either going to be February 1st or 2nd.
Okay. So, but before our next council meeting?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. So, check your schedule, see if February 1st or 2nd is available. And I believe that's a Wednesday or a Thursday. Then, the second one I just wanted to report on is I have been participating in meetings with town staff and school staff, parents, and students, and it's in regards to the recent suicides that we've had in Enfield. And so, we've had a number of meetings, and just wanted to report back to the council that the steps that were put into place, or the action items that were discussed in mid-November, when we started meeting, prior to the community conversation that we had at Enfield High School in early December, just wanted to report back that we are making progress, that there have been meetings in the schools at Fermi, Enfield, and JFK with students. Dr. Michael Schultz from DCF has been very available and present here in Enfield, meeting with all relevant staff, setting out the game plan and the next steps. So, just wanted to let you folks know that that continues. We're having a large meeting Friday afternoon with the same group that was together about a month or so ago, sometime in December, prior to the community conversation. And so, we had met as a group, and that includes town staff, school staff, students, and parents as well. Just wanted to report that we're still working that process and coming up with how we address the issues, both immediate and long-term. And it definitely is going to be a long-term commitment by folks on the town side and the school side, and with involvement of parents and students. Okay? Councilman Crowley?
Yeah, I apologize for being late, but Tuesday night is basketball night for Enfield High School, so I had an opportunity to get over to the game, and something I'm proud to report is that tonight, the all-time scoring record for the town of Enfield was broken. Tre'Shawn Preston hit his 1,492nd point.
Wow.
In a career, and that's a remarkable amount of points, if you think about it. And there's 10 games left in the season, not counting playoffs. So, he's an amazing young athlete, and as a lot of guys on that team are. All the seniors, John Serato, Tony Romano, Hugh Lindo, and Tre', it's been a pleasure watching him really progress the last four years, but this was a real milestone, and the place went crazy when he scored his basket. the place went crazy when he scored his basket, and Enfield High is winning by 30-something. So, end of third quarter, they're having a great season, they're 10-0. But, yeah, I was just proud of him, and I think it's nice when somebody meets a milestone like that, that it should be recognized. I mean, they may go out of turn with this announcement, but...
No, that's a great announcement, and congratulations to him and to the Enfield High basketball team.
Thank you.
They look to have a very good and successful season, so it's nice, nice to see. All right, anyone else for special reports or reports from special committees? Then, we'll move to old business. And I did include on my write-up, and you have in front of you the application for Paul Coffey's reapportment to loan review, but it was not in the council packet. Is it the pleasure of the council to take that up this evening or to push it off to the next meeting? If you want to move on it, we'd have to remove the item from, remove it from the table. Councilman Edgar?
Yes. I serve on that committee, and he is a vital part of that committee, and at the present time, we do have trouble making a...
Quorum.
Quorum. And I would ask that you consider that tonight, and I would make that motion.
Okay, so Councilman Edgar makes a motion to remove item 12A9 from the table, seconded by Councilman Kinsler. All those in favor of removing the item from the table? Those opposed? Item's been removed from the table. Is there a nomination?
I would nominate Paul Coffey for reapportment.
Motion by Councilman Edgar, seconded by Councilman Kinsler to reappoint Paul Coffey. Any, is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close.
By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor of closing nominations? Those opposed? Nominations are closed. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Arnone?
Paul Coffey.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Paul Coffey.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Paul Coffey.
Mayor Copen?
Paul Coffey.
Councilman Kinsler?
Paul Coffey.
Councilman Mangini?
Paul Coffey.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Paul Coffey.
Councilman Stokes?
Paul Coffey.
Just ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Any other appointments, Town Council? Then, we move to appointments. Town manager, none. Item C, D, and E remain on the table. Item F, is there a motion to remove item F from the table?
Second.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. All those in favor of removing item F from the table, by a show of hands? Those opposed? Item F has been removed from the table. This is, be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt a policy and procedure for Enfield Town Council meetings dated January 7, 2008. But should I change that date to January 17, 2012? What's that? Okay, so then, I read it as January 7, 2008? Just want to make sure that we're reading the resolution correctly. Because it actually says, "Proposed changes, December 19, 2011," on the document.
I think as you read it in, you should read it in with today's date.
Okay. So, be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council does hereby adopt a policy and procedure for Enfield Town Council meetings dated January 17, 2012.
Some moves.
Moved by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Hall. Discussion from the committee. Greg?
Yeah, I can start it off. We had a couple of changes on here, and of course, we've had some conversations in our caucus, and I'm sure that in the other caucus, and basically, it is on page number seven when it deals with decorum and order, number 12, under letter D, down in the red part down there, it says, "There shall not be any dialogue between the public and councilmen during public communications." But as we discussed it with the mayor, and I understand this is discussed in leadership, they came up with a wording that simply goes that no person shall enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of the council without permission of the presiding officer. And I think that was the language that, in our caucus, we talked about putting in there. I think they talked about leadership. So, that way, it serves the purpose of not having a give-and-take with the public during public communications, but it also gives the leeway and gives the privilege to the chair to be able, at times, to coordinate if there is a need for some discussion that his or her will. So, that was the first change. The second change had to do with notifications for ordinances and things like that. We usually do the newspaper, other mediums. The only thing that wasn't in there was our town website, and we're electronic age, and I think that all our correspondence should also be on the website, and actually should be priority on the website. So, we added that in there also, too. So, that's what I have. So, if anybody else from the committee wants to respond.
Tom or Cindy? Cindy?
I think, Greg, pretty germane, not a great issue. I think the key here is that we, the council, try and adhere to the policy. There were a couple of things that we discussed in our little subcommittee that, you know, we need to tighten up a little bit, some of the issues, such as being more respectful to each other, et cetera, but that's all in the policy. So, as far as language, it's there. So, I enjoyed working with both of you gentlemen. Thank you.
And let me say, I enjoyed working with both of them also, too. My question is also to the mayor, is the committee that was set up for this, was that a temporary committee, or do we exist throughout its entire tenure? So, if a question comes up where somebody feels that a council member has maybe overstretched, gone beyond the policy, or violated a policy, you know, we're here, obviously, to look at it and see if any changes need to be in the future.
Yep.
So...
Anyone else? Any discussion? Matt?
Something that maybe right now doesn't have to be addressed, but that committee probably needs to think about, is when we go to the e-packets, when you go to, and I believe it's on page four, item for special meetings, what the text says there is that we will serve personally upon each member the agenda.
Yeah.
Right.
And so, we need to take a look at that.
What we can do is when we go to, if, when we go to e-packets and as we did, what we're doing at that time, we reconvene the committee if the mayor's all right with this and the council's okay, to go through the policy procedures and see if there's anything else that would need to be adjusted to deal with electronic and medium.
Probably be like we did on the notification.
Right, right.
Adding.
Adding and just making it up-to-date to the modern technology we're using. So, we're happy to do that.
I need sense.
Okay, so, it's understood that page seven, section 12, subsection D, the last sentence is, "No person shall enter into any discussion either directly or through a member of the council without permission of the presiding officer."
Right.
Period.
Period.
So, there's a portion that's been struck out, and what's in red is not, no longer part of the proposal.
No, because it basically kind of contradicts the other part of giving the chair, and I think the spirit of it was is that we want to make sure, as we tell the public, we don't have a give-and-take, but there may be times where the chair recognizes there needs to be something addressed immediately in the welfare of a citizen, gives you the privilege.
Yep. Then, on page 10, adding website.
Right.
So, by, that's understood in the resolution that we put forward, that those are the changes.
Right.
Okay. So, if there's no other discussion, Councilman Mangini?
I would just have a request of town staff to please make the changes and get the fresh copies back out to us, so we'll all have the corrected copies.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Arnone?
Yes.
Councilman Bosco?
Four.
Councilman Crowley?
Yes.
Councilman Edgar?
Four.
Councilman Hall?
Four.
Mayor Copen?
Four.
Councilman Kinsler?
Four.
Councilman Mangini?
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Four.
Councilman Stokes?
Four.
Just ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Okay, and then, item G remains on the table. So, we move to new business. There's no consent agenda. Appointments, Town Council appointed, there are none. Item C, appointments, Town Manager appointed, council approved. Matt, do you have nominations for number one?
Yes, number one, I'd like to reappoint Paul Sensky as the Fire Marshal Representative on the Housing Code Appeals Board.
Is there a motion to approve the manager's recommendation by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini? Any discussion? Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, congratulations, Mr. Sensky. And item two?
I would like to appoint Roger Russell. It's actually a reapportment, he was in that seat before, but there was a kind of a break in the appointment process.
Motion to reappoint? Motion to accept the manager's recommendation by Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Mangini. Any discussion? Again, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Russell is appointed. Congratulations. Anything else, Matt, on those items?
That is all.
That completes new business. We go to items for discussion. All items, all items but B1 were moved to miscellaneous, and B1, we're just going to hold off right now per my email that I'd put out to you folks on the appointment of a constable position until Mr. Diana is back in town. Okay? So, we move to miscellaneous, and the first item under miscellaneous would be the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Stokes to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, by a show of hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Any abstentions? The consent agenda is adopted. We then move to item, the next item, discussion resolution, request to transfer funds for community development, $40,000. Hold on a second. Trying to pull it up on my... Resolved that, what's that? Resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made to Housing Rehabilitation Loan Construction, $40,000, from Community Development Fund Balance Appropriations Control, $40,000. Certified the funds are available, Lynn Neney, Director of Finance?
Some move.
By Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Hall. Discussion, Peter's here. People had requested Peter to be here to answer any questions. Do you have a presentation for us first?
Well, briefly, I did pass, or did provide you with some information about our loan programs. We have, currently, we have five of them. They are the Housing Rehab Program, the Commercial Facade Program, First-Time Home Buyer Fund, Small Business Loan Fund, and the Community Development Corporation. I provided you with the information that you were looking for, the number of outstanding loans, the total amount of outstanding balances, the average monthly income received, and the current amounts of program income on hand. I also provided you with a list of definitions at the top, just to try to make the discussion a little easier for everyone.
Okay. Thank you for that. Questions from the council? Councilman Hall?
Peter, the $40,000 that we're transferring would strictly go into the rehab part of the loans that you presently give out.
That's correct. It's, the way the program works is we provide loans through the Community Development Block Grant Program. When we put those loans out into the communities, they're, they're put out in a couple of ways. Either they are through low-interest payment loans, which are typically between 1% and 6%, or they're what we call deferred loans. Deferred loans are not paid back until the house is sold or conveyed. So, any funds that come in over time and come back to us as loan proceeds are what we call program income. In each of these categories, we can only accrue up to $50,000 in program income. At that time, the state tells us to get them out of the, out of the program income fund and back into the expense fund so that we can recapitalize the program. And so, that's what we're doing now. We do it periodically, and we've done it, I don't know, maybe a dozen times since I've been here. It's sort of a maintenance item, and it's just a way to get the money, the proceeds, the loan proceeds that came in to get them back out into the community.
And the, you have applicants now that are waiting for this money to come into the program?
We actually have 11 ongoing projects at this point in time worth about $148,000. We have expended our last grant, and so, we need this extra $40,000 to finish off those projects.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilman Edgar?
Peter, being on the committee, this is for projects, not new projects.
That is correct. These are, the $40,000 transfer is for projects that are already in progress.
Is it something that the committee is going to have to reapprove, or it will just be added to?
It'll just be added to our expense accounts.
Councilman Stokes?
Just, I can clarify, you said this is for money, ongoing projects. Are any of these have been, like, waiting for money that had their application, say, a year ago, and that they would need to have another review to get them more money in case any credit information had changed or anything?
For, the $40,000 is going to take care of projects that are already underway. We're actually talking about putting in a new application in the spring to get more Community Development Block Grant money to do housing rehab, and then people would be able to apply. But essentially, now, we are out of money.
Okay, okay, all right. I serve also, I guess, now with red on this, so, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Councilman Crowley?
Basically, what I was going to touch on, the $40,000 basically will be used up as soon as it's put in.
That's correct.
So, is there more that you're going to need at the present time?
I'd love to have more money, but this is a federally funded program. We have to apply to get more funds, and that has to be done in the spring.
Okay, that was my question. So, at this point in time, there's no other jobs that you're going to be taking on in the meantime?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Deputy Mayor Nelson?
Through the mayor, Pete, do you, how do we prioritize these loans? I mean, you're in a tough position with not a lot of money. I mean, you get somebody who needs a furnace replacement or somebody who's completely broke down and don't work. I mean, do you guys have the authority to put one ahead of the other, even regardless of how they applied?
We have, we have priorities, and emergencies do take priorities. If somebody's furnace goes down in the middle of the winter, that's a priority item. We've had, we had a case recently where a roof was in dire, it was collapsing, and we took that on because that was a true emergency. So, my, emergencies do take top place. And then, we look at other things, like if you have children in the house and you have, you know, a lot of lead paint, or, you know, a potential situation where you have a, you know, a panel that could burst into flames. We try to address those items first. The staff prioritizes these things, and then we bring them to loan review, and they help us set the priorities and decide, you know, who should get the money.
Now, as far as a situation, the furnace dies in the middle of the winter. I mean, is there guidelines that they have to be able to prove they could repay this loan, or?
Well, that's where you get into sort of the deferred against the payments. Sometimes, we have people that really have no ability to pay, so we use the equity in their home as the, the equity to secure the loan, exactly. And so, once that property is either sold or conveyed to their relatives, we get paid back.
Okay, so you just secure the money one way or another?
Correct.
Right, and if they have the means to pay?
Then they do pay.
Okay, good, great. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Edgar?
Just to help out a little bit, we recently had a widow who was living in a house with no heat, and we went through an emergency deferred loan for her because she was living on Social Security and no other way to... Security and no other way to pay it back.
Thank you, Red. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Peter. Sensing no more questions or comments, roll call, please.
Councilman Arnone.
Four.
Councilman Bosco.
Four.
Councilman Crowley.
Four.
Councilman Edgar.
Four.
Councilman Hall.
Four.
Mayor Copen.
Four.
Councilman Kinsler.
Four.
Councilman Mangini.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Councilman Stokes.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Next item on the agenda is discussion resolution, resolution removing members on the Enfield Beautification Committee. Whereas on September 2, 2008, pursuant to nomination number 0007, the Enfield Town Council appointed Jaylene Frenay to be a member of the Enfield Beautification Committee. And whereas on May 3, 2010, pursuant to nomination number 870, the Enfield Town Council appointed Gary Turner to be a member of the Enfield Beautification Committee. And whereas, a requirement of membership on the Enfield Beautification Committee is that each member be an elector of the town of Enfield, per Town Council Resolution Number 3341 and Town Council Resolution Number 4896. And whereas, per Connecticut's General Statute, Section 9-12, an individual may be, must be a resident of the town in which he or she applies for admission as an elector. And whereas Gary Turner and Jaylene Frenay are no longer residents of the town of Enfield, and as such, are no longer electors of the town of Enfield. And whereas Gary Turner and Jaylene Frenay are no longer qualified to be members of the Enfield Beautification Committee, now therefore be it resolved that Gary Turner and Jaylene Frenay are hereby removed as members of the Enfield Beautification Committee.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Mangini, seconded by Councilman Kinsler. Any discussion? Sensing none, roll call, please.
Councilman Arnone.
Four.
Councilman Bosco.
Four.
Councilman Crowley.
Four.
Councilman Edgar.
Four.
Councilman Hall.
Four.
Mayor Copen.
Four.
Councilman Kinsler.
Four.
Councilman Mangini.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Councilman Stokes.
Four.
There's 10 in favor, none against, no abstentions.
Okay, that completes miscellaneous. And next would be public communications. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council? Sensing none, councilman communications. Any councilman communications? Sensing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor Nelson, seconded by Councilman Stokes. All those in favor? Those opposed? We are adjourned. Have a good night.
Good night, Derek.